Rena Getz is a scientist by profession and was an active Newton Public School parent. She is a community activist and founding member and current vice president of the Waban Area Council. Rena, her husband Paul, and their three children have lived in Waban for more than 25 years. Bill Humphrey is a community activist and fifth generation Ward Five native, whose career has been in digital media and progressive political campaigns. Kathy Winter is an attorney with experience in corporate tax. She has lived in Newton for 19 years with her husband and four children, all of whom attended Newton Public Schools. She's held a number of leadership positions in local community organizations, and she currently serves as president of the Waban Area Council. So let's dig down a little deeper and see who you are and why you're running. Can you take a little time to describe your background, your education, your work or life experiences that have equipped you to be an effective representative of the people from Ward Five? Rena, let's start with you.
Oh, great. Thank you. I actually was not born in this country. I was born in Spain. I've lived in many different parts of the world, and in doing so, I have the richness of multicultural sort of sensitivity, but I also too have learned to listen to people. And I think it's very important when you are in a role of Ward Counselor that you actually listen. So I'm very appreciative of that opportunity. And then I also too feel as if, as a scientist, I can really dig deep into data, and I also feel as if, living in Newton for the 25-plus years, I've really grown to know my community.
Right.
So I'm very appreciative of having lived here for the length of time that I have.
Good. Kathy?
I grew up in Burnt Hills, New York, which is a very small town, about 30 minutes outside of Schenectady, New York. I first came to Newton as a student at Boston College. After my undergraduate years, I moved to Washington DC where I attended Georgetown Law, and then I worked as a corporate tax attorney there, met my husband there. After we started our family, we moved up here to Newton. I've now lived here for close to 19 years. I've been very involved in the community throughout that time, joining the Waban Area Council on its formation five and a half years ago. I'm running because, you know, through my work on the Waban Area Council, I've really come to value how important city government is in our everyday lives. I'm a person who believes in respectful dialogue, in examining all sides of an issue, in trying to build consensus and move forward. And in today's day and age, I just feel the motivation to step up and be part of the process to move Newton forward.
Thank you. Bill, you talk about being a community activist. Can you share with us some of the specifically Ward Five-related involvements that you've had?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, I grew up here, went through the Newton Public Schools here. Some folks might remember around 2008, 2009, thereabouts, there was a whole bunch of things that were happening in Newton that directly involved a lot of the kids in the schools, which I was at the time. You know, there was the override fight, the new high school referendum, there was a hotly contested mayoral election, so forth. There was a lot of things going on. I had always been, you know, politically interested and engaged, but I was getting involved in some of those. There was a lot of student activism at the time in the high school. This is, you know, a little over a decade ago at this point. And the Board of Aldermen actually helped, you know, gave me a scholarship to go to college to study political science at the University of Delaware. And I was then involved in campaigns in Delaware like the Fight for Marriage Equality. And after that, I came back here, and my next-door neighbor was running for city council, so I got involved in that. And then kind of stayed involved every, you know, year or two in the various campaigns that were happening in Newton, trying to, you know, put pressure on to get more affordable housing, you know, address environmental issues, fight for the rights of immigrants in our community. And so I've just been, you know, continued to stay involved. You know, as I think you mentioned in the description of me, I'm a fifth-generation resident here. A lot of my family members were still around here when I was growing up, and many of them still are today. And that influenced me in the way that I think that this should be a community for everyone. I believe everyone has to be welcome here. You know, we need a counselor who's going to represent the entire Ward and fight for those priorities that I think are the prevailing views here.
Well, I wonder, I'd like to hear from each of you whether there are current or past counselors or aldermen who have inspired you and would be models for, would help voters understand how you see your role as a city counselor.
Yeah, I mean, that's an easy one for me. It would be our current Ward Five Counselor, John Rice. I've worked closely with John in my role on the Waban Area Council, and I have tremendous respect for how responsive John is to constituent concerns, how hard he works on behalf of the Ward. He's done a great deal, great deal of community building within the Ward. He's also just really good at getting things done in his quiet and efficient way. So, you know, to me, John is a model Ward Counselor, and I'm really proud to have his endorsement in this race.
Bill, how about you? You've certainly been around long enough to have seen a whole spate of counselors and aldermen. Can you identify one or two who would be a model for you?
Yeah, well, at this point, I've definitely worked within various capacities, a lot of the city counselors, some of them, you know, they had kids that were in schools with me, or they were, you know, even not even on the city council yet when I started getting involved.
Is there somebody specific?
Specifically, you know, the person who has definitely been sort of one of my biggest mentors in Newton politics over the last four or five years at this point is probably Susan Albright, who's the Ward Two at-large Counselor. She, you know, and I have worked very closely on the housing issues, the environmental issues, and the immigrants' rights legislation that she put forward. And she was certainly very helpful early on when I was thinking about running for this in terms of figuring out what issues that I care about in general I could make a difference on at the municipal level if I were elected.
Thank you. Rena, how about you?
This one is very easy for me. It's Brian, Brian Yates. And I worked with him on three of his election campaigns. And I sort of feel as if Ward Five, as well as Upper Falls, has lost an incredible human being in his passing this last March. But working closely with Brian, I really got a very strong sense of what it is to be a alderman or a counselor. And I actually feel as if Brian did a wonderful job of representing both the city as well as his constituency here in Upper Falls.
Well, you know, you touch on a very interesting point because it goes to the organization of local democracy and representation. And I'd like to hear from all of you about how you balance the preferences of Ward residents versus perceived needs of the city at large. You know, will you always represent the Ward interests when voting as a city councilor, or do you take more of a "what's best for Newton as a whole" approach? Let's see. Rena, Bill, why don't we start with you?
Sure. Well, I've been going door-to-door since the beginning of February this year, knocked on, personally knocked on, more than 5,800 doors at this point, talking to as many folks as possible to make sure that I understand what the perspectives of the Ward are, what the views of the voters are in this Ward. I think I've gotten a pretty good sense of that beyond what, you know, I had already intuited from working in Newton politics. I don't see a conflict between the interests of the Ward and the interests of the city. I think they're generally aligned, especially here in Ward Five. You know, I'm certainly, if I'm elected, I'm going to be representing Ward Five, but we also have an equal vote with all of the other city counselors, most of whom are representing the entire city. And part of our job, once we're elected, is to, you know, act in the best interests of the city. However, I think that it's also a mistake to assume that public opinion and what people want is completely set in stone on everything permanently. A lot of that is determined by the case that people make to them, right? If you have someone who's a political, you know, candidate or elected official who goes out there and makes the case that this is, you know, what we should be doing, sometimes people will change their mind on that. So I think it's important to take that into consideration, too, that if there's some hot-button controversial issue, it's important to not just, you know, go out there and listen, but also explain why, as an elected official, you're leaning toward, you know, one thing or the other.
Can you see yourself voting for something that has broad appeal in the city but not in Ward Five?
So far, I haven't encountered any issues where I think that there's something that the entire rest of the city but not Ward Five wants, but that Ward Five is completely opposed to it. I think usually if there's significant opposition in Ward Five to something, there's usually significant opposition in the rest of the city.
Kathy?
Yeah, I mean, I do think that as a Ward Counselor, we have a special role to represent the Ward because, you know, those are the residents who are electing us. And I see that role, you know, not so much in how you vote, but as, as in being a voice for the Ward. You need to make sure that Ward concerns have a sort of a seat at the table, so that if there's an issue that has particular impact on Ward Five that may not play out for the rest of the city, you can raise that and, you know, try to convince your fellow counselors to address that. But obviously, you're one of 24 counselors, so your vote isn't going to sway the issue. But I think it's really important that you just serve as that voice for the Ward.
Rena, how do you do that balancing test?
This one is one that I feel as if, as a Ward representative, it's the realization of grassroots democracy. So my responsibility and my obligation is to be a voice for my community. I really believe that the two should not be mutually exclusive, but I also feel as if, since we are eight wards, my primary responsibility is to represent the concerns, the viewpoints of my constituency. I will always vote with my constituency. I do think that there's a role for mediation, you know, in terms of when specific issues affect my Ward, but ultimately, I will be reflective of the prevailing opinion in my Ward.
Let's drill down a little bit without getting too much in the weeds on particular issues, but kind of deal thematically. What are the most important issues that Ward Five residents and their Ward counselors should be concerned about? You know, what are your top three priorities, for example, as a Ward Counselor? Start at the center.
Well, a huge priority of mine, this applies citywide, but particularly in Ward Five, is streets and sidewalks. And I think this is an issue that many residents share. I mean, we need to improve our streets and sidewalks. We need to pave them. We need to have complete sidewalks, especially along our busy streets. You know, Ward Five is a place where folks ought to be able to walk to many amenities, including, you know, village centers, schools, parks, shops. But we have sections where we're missing sidewalks, where we're in need of traffic calming, where we don't have safe crossings. So, you know, as a city councilor, I would look to adopt a comprehensive pedestrian facilities plan so we can have some idea of how we can get to a place where Newton is more accessible to pedestrians and we can confront how much that would cost.
Rena?
My primary concern is development. I think of it as being Northland and Riverside, and then I also think about the proposed new zoning code. I really feel as if our constituency needs to be engaged and involved in the process and to have a residential place at the table, because I think of it as being one of the most impactful, both in terms of our stressed infrastructure and the impact on our quality of life and our daily living.
So you're saying development, but are there a couple of other priorities that...
Well, it's having everybody engaged and at the table for the proposed zoning code. And then I also think that we really need to think very hard about the developments that are coming and are being voted on. So I think it's important that we, as a community, are engaged and we really actually understand what the impacts of those developments will be.
Bill, your top three priorities?
Yeah, my top three priorities, fixing the roads, which are in bad shape, and that includes also fixing the sidewalks with that, working locally to take bold action on the environmental and climate crisis, and promoting more affordable housing in Newton, which has been a huge priority for a lot of our residents.
Okay, and we're going to drill down. You may rest assured into those. I'd like to talk a little bit about Newton, the Garden City, the slogan really being emblematic of our shared heritage. And again, the need for balancing the desire for historic preservation and the other values. For example, historic preservation versus the rights of individual property owners to do what they want to with their property. How do you, how do you deal with that? Let's start down at that end. Rena?
Well, I think of us as being a generation that needs to be stewards of our community. And I also think that means protecting our open space. And I think that we need to think about the value of historic preservation. I think it's important to leave the built infrastructure in such a way that it is representational of our history. And I also think that it's important to value our open space. We are incredibly lucky to have the tree canopy that we do. We need to value trees. We need to value our recreational open space. And I think that in terms of the juxtapositioning of historic preservation versus property rights, I think it's an equal balance. And I think every resident has the opportunity to put a preservation restriction on their home if they so desire. But I also think that there are buildings, like the Strong Building and the Stevens Buildings, that are significant for our community because they have been, they're pretty much the way that they have been for the last 100 years. So we need to have sort of master planning, and we need to have community engagement in terms of village center master planning.
Bill?
Well, the concept of the Garden City in some ways, you know, is kind of looking back at something that was here quite a while ago, and I think, you know, in my lifetime...
Some of us were too.
Well, you know, look at it this way. I mean, my great-grandfather, you know, he wrote a letter in, I think it was the 1920s or 1930s complaining about that the neighbor on Wyman Street that had a prize-winning flower farm, you know, for growing flowers for florists, you know, had sold off the property and it was going to all be turned into homes. That, I think, is what, you know, some of the genesis of the concept of the Garden City, and that has been gone for quite a long time now, you know, which in many ways is probably unfortunate, you know. But that, some of these changes happen, and, you know, it's a question of managing it and not necessarily, you know, being ultra-preservationist about every single thing. You know, a lot of those people that live in those homes on that street now are people that have, you know, they knew my dad when he was growing up, they knew my grandmother when she was growing up, you know. And my, the houses that, where my cousin lives, where my dad grew up around the corner, that house wasn't there when my family moved in on Chestnut Street. And, you know, they weren't happy about it when it got built, but they were sure happy when their daughter was able to move in around the corner. And so we need to think of it in those terms as well, right? That if we're, you know, being, you know, obviously, we want to preserve our village centers and the things that really make Newton unique, and we want to preserve and protect our legitimately, you know, existing green space, but that's not necessarily the same as, you know, making every building, you know, a historic preservation building and things like that, because a lot of that ship sailed in the 1950s, and we can't put that back in the bottle.
Kathy?
Yeah, I mean, I think the moniker is still accurate. I think we are the Garden City. Certainly, our leafy streets were something that drew my husband and I to Newton when we were looking for where to settle in the Boston area. And in canvassing, you know, I haven't encountered anybody in Newton who wants less green and open space, right? That's sort of a uniform desire. In balancing private interests, I would say, you know, as we look to zoning reform, which hopefully will get picked up again in the next term, I think it's important that as we try to come up with clear rules to guide our future, that one of our priorities is to reduce tear-down vulnerability. I think that that has, you know, it has a historic preservation component, but it also is something that serves the purpose of confronting climate change, because obviously, there's tremendous embodied carbon that's related to any tear-down in new builds. So, I mean, that's one way I think we can try to balance private interest. I don't think it should be the case that you can never tear down a building, but I do think in the overall analysis of a new zoning code, that should be one of the factors that guides us to try to reduce tear-down vulnerability through the dimensional controls.
Could I hear from each of you on your position on the proposed Newton Highlands Local Historic District and, you know, the whole move to protect the Lincoln Street Victorian houses? Bill, how about you first on that?
Well, Lincoln Street is certainly a remaining example of some pretty interesting history in Newton, and I think it would be, you know, good to try to preserve some of that. I live in a similar Victorian home on Chestnut Street, but, you know, there's certainly been changes made to that. I, you know, I know that there was an effort regarding the historic district a number of years ago. I don't know if it's been brought back up again. I would certainly, you know, be interested to see more details on it if it gets floated again. I don't think I know the specifics enough of what they're thinking of going forward to know, you know, if that's a good idea or not.
Rena?
Historic preservation is important to me, and I also feel as if there's value to it. And I think that we need to really do a deep sort of educational piece to it, because I think that people have very sort of misunderstandings of what it means to be in a historic district. I think that people sort of assume that it requires that everything in your house needs to be reviewed if in fact, you know, you are in a historic district. And it's not, it's not the case. So I do believe that there's incredible value to having some sort of historic preservation of significant buildings, contributing buildings, buildings that in, you know, I always say that a building that's 100 years old should have the right to be 200 years old, because we have many in our community that are 200 years old. So I think of it as being the, one of the most environmentally sound judgments in terms of not tearing down a house, potentially sort of modifying it and adding to it as we did over the centuries where we would build Ls and people would sort of adapt the space and create another unit on their house in order to accommodate more people.
We're going to move into a discussion on development broadly speaking, but...
You can just turn it on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Please. Lincoln Street, and then...
That's okay. I mean, I agree with much of what Rena said. I think historic districts can be very valuable, but it does require extensive education so that residents are aware of what it means. And, you know, I'm only supportive of them if the residents are supportive of them because of the constraints that it can put on private property owners.
As we move into development, and we'll drill down into some specific ones, but there are some communities, Arlington, Saga, so I think, Dedham, who have put one form or another of a moratorium on new development. Would you, in the interest of preservation, go that far? How far would you go to slow things, slow down the change that there are sometimes reasons to embrace?
Who's goes first?
Oh, okay, let's say Kathy, so I don't forget you this time.
Are you talking in terms of large-scale development or, you know, single-family homes that are rebuilt?
Well, there can be a moratorium on tear downs, for example, or a moratorium on large-scale developments. Where does the idea of a moratorium sort of generically come in?
Yeah, well, so I do think, I'm sure we'll get more into sort of large-scale development, but I do think we're part of a region that's facing a housing shortage, and we really haven't developed much housing in Newton over the, you know, past 19 years that I've lived here, so I would not be supportive of a moratorium on new development in terms of multi-unit housing. In terms of, in terms of single-family home tear downs, I mean, I think we just need to get moving on zoning reform. We need to provide clearer rules, especially in terms of the dimensional control, setbacks, height, that might reduce tear-down vulnerability.
Rena?
Well, a moratorium is a pause, and all it's doing is saying, it's saying, "Hold", in terms of, and they're usually very short-term. They're usually like six months. And it's an effective tool, but I would hope that we in Newton would not need to get to a status of a moratorium. I think of it as being the kind of thing where hopefully the proposed zoning code will fulfill all, check all the boxes in terms of providing a context-based redevelopment of our community. But I also believe that we, you know, the proposed zoning is, it's conceptually completely different in terms of what we have now for our zoning. So there has to be a long-term process of educating the community so that they can actually interpret, understand, and fully apply the proposed zoning to their own parcels. Because I think that there's a, Kathy mentions the tear-down vulnerability, but there are all sorts of different standards that are put in place for different, for a single-family versus a village versus a, it's the classification. So I think that what we need to do is spend a year, two years going through the proposed zoning code.
Bill?
In terms of the single-family tear-downs development, I don't think that a moratorium is the way to address that for a number of reasons. First and foremost, you know, if it's six months, 12 months, 18 months, most of the time, they're just going to put a pause on it, wait it, run out the clock, and then go do it anyway. So then you haven't really solved anything either way. In the meantime, of course, there's a lot of working-class folks in the construction business in this city who will be, you know, not working during that time, you know, or they have to, you know, find some other project to do. So that's certainly not helpful. I think this is something that has to be addressed through overall zoning code reforms. And it is something that should be addressed, because obviously, a lot of people are concerned about it, but also, you know, from an affordable housing standpoint, if we're, you know, taking away all of the, you know, modest single-family homes and replacing them not with other modest newer homes, but giant single-family homes, that's not great for natural affordability of the housing stock. Also, we've seen, and Green Newton has been pointing this out all year, that many of those very large single-family homes, or in the case of Upper Falls, very large duplexes, tend to be so huge for relatively small family sizes that their energy use actually offsets any gains that have been made by implementing new energy efficiency technology or anything over, say, a, you know, GI-built house that was built, you know, more than half a century ago. And that's sort of an astonishing thing to realize. So from an environmental standpoint, it's not great either. And a lot of folks are also very concerned, I think reasonably, about the clear cutting of trees. I mean, you want to talk about Garden City. You know, it's one thing to talk about, you know, people's lawns or whatever. It's a completely different thing to say, "Oh, we're going to cut every single tree down on this lot", and then, I guess, you know, plant a few new evergreens that won't get watered and will die? I mean, you know, so something like, that, it does need to be addressed, but a moratorium, I don't think is the way to address it. It's not going to fix it.
Moving deeper into the whole issue of development, we've got a special permitting process for new multi-unit housing construction. Also, with the proposed rezoning, that could expand higher-density construction. And I've seen one projection that would have these changes plus the already existing developments, large developments, generating something like 11,000 new residents in Newton over the next few years. We have Northland in, you know, along Needham Street, and we have Riverside, both of those with hundreds, and then we have the high-density projects already under construction on Washington Street. So basically, how much growth can Newton sustain? And I open it up and feel free to jump in and identify which of those projects you support and why, and how far we should go.
You know, I sort of see, to sort of answer your question in a very sort of like global or overview way, I think we in the city need to decide how large we want to become. I also think that we need to think long and hard about where we're going to do infill development in terms of the proposed zoning code. I also think that everybody should know that right now, we have the accessory apartment ordinance where you can in fact put a thousand-square-foot unit by right in your house, so that we could have the potential of every single-family dwelling to become two today. So I think that what's important with the special permits that you mentioned, both Northland and Riverside, those are in the special permit process. And it is, what they're doing is they're asking for waivers. They're outside of the normal zoning. So we, as a community, need to sort of off-balance or sort of ask, what is the mitigation? What is we, as a community, are going to benefit by these builds? And I think of those parcels as being large enough that they are very unique opportunities for very unique builds. And I think that we, as a community, are being commodified. And we really need to think long and hard about whether or not we want that to happen in our community. Because it's, is it of benefit to the city of Newton to have such high-density sites, especially Northland, that is not sustainable? So I really sort of feel as if these are the kinds of questions that need to be asked, but I think... But I think more importantly, that we, as a community, need to decide and have a roadmap for master planning and for deciding how large we want to become.
Kathy, do you, do you agree? And what kind of roadmap would work?
No, I don't agree with that framework because I think you need to ask more than whether we, as Newton, will benefit. But I think we have an obligation to serve the public good. And we need to, you know, we can't ignore where we are as a city. We are part of the Boston region, right? We're part of an area that's facing a housing shortage, an affordability crisis. The only way to address that is if all of the cities in and around Boston start to develop more housing. Look, economic growth is generally a positive thing, and it is, you know, causing a demand for housing that is outpacing production. So, you know, I can't just look at it as, does this development benefit Newton? And I'm cognizant of the fact that some of these high-density development are gonna involve impacts on neighbors, especially concerning traffic. It may involve increased infrastructure needs, especially in terms of school enrollment. But I think those are issues that we need to address through the negotiation process with developers.
Yep.
I think that, given our proximity, you know, neighboring status to Boston, the issue of growth in general is more of a question of where and what and, you know, what that looks like rather than a question of if it is gonna happen. And that's particularly true if you're talking about a privately-owned parcel, you know, there's a number of large parcels that have a private owner. And at that point, you know, they're probably going to build something. So then it's a question of negotiating with them to try to get the best possible something that we can and not have them walk away and just build something, you know, on their own without any sort of negotiation process. My role as a counselor would be to, you know, go into those negotiations in an impartial manner and try to evaluate what they're proposing and, you know, say, hey, can we make this modification or that modification that will get us to where we need to be, you know, checking off those environmental sustainability components, making sure that these new huge developments are not starting off on fossil fuels even though they're gonna be, you know, around in a couple decades when we're all supposed to be off of fossil fuels. Those kind of evaluations, along with, you know, what percentage of affordable housing units we have in those, I think is gonna be certainly very important. You know, and it's always gonna be a difficult balancing act. And I think also, you know, to the point about commodification that Rena was bringing up, obviously, you know, as a progressive, I have to evaluate, you know, a multibillion-dollar development corporation through the light of it being what I just described it as, and, you know, take that into account. But of course, it's worth remembering that all housing in this city, with very, very few exceptions, is commodified. I mean, a lot of people, you know, with their single-family homes, their whole retirement plan is based on selling off their home. That inherently means that the market is already commodified. So to treat it completely differently and sort of suggest that, you know, this is something uniquely different completely, I mean, short of having some kind of a communist revolution that abolishes property rights, I don't think that that's the conversation that is relevant to what we're talking about right now.
Rena, you were jumping out of your skin.
Yeah, you know, I sort of feel as if I think that an explanation is needed, you know, in terms of what commodified means. Because I think that people need to understand that we have real estate investors making significant investments in Newton because of the desirability of our location. And when I say commodified, I mean that they, we have no value, there's no way to sort of evaluate community and all of the benefits of our environment. So when I say commodified, it means that someone else is taking the benefit of our community and then turning it into a, an asset for their benefit. And that's what I'm specifically talking about rental housing and at the level that it is in terms of both the Northland and the Riverside sites. But when I, so that's what I'm talking because there's an incredible amount of real estate money that has been, that has been re, money globally that's been invested in real estate. It's parked in real estate.
Right.
So that's the model.
I certainly wouldn't disagree with that, but I just, you know, I mean, is the issue here that they're rental apartments, is that the part that is concerning to you?
No, 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 no. It's just the part that we are, we have a very stressed infrastructure. So we bring to the table the need of, we, through our property taxes, pay for those infrastructure improvements. We support the roads, traffic, schools. So we pay for that piece of it. And then when I'm speaking to, when you talk about the, you just misinterpreted my, my meaning of commodity.
Kathy, you wanna weigh in?
I disagree.
I don't want to weigh in on the meaning of commodity.
All right. Well, let me ask you. You mentioned schools. What if Northland creates the need for X number, say, 70 elementary school students, and we are, we are right here in the site of a school that is no longer? And I know you're running for city council, not school committee, but just, you know, one or two-word response, I mean, does there need to be an additional school in Newton Upper Falls?
Yeah, I can jump in. I mean, I would love to see an additional elementary school in Newton Upper Falls. And, you know, I'm familiar with the demographers report that the city hired a demographer who, you know, cited declining enrollment because of, you know, just sort of the overall age of the population in Newton. But I'm very skeptical of his projections for new development. I think that especially now as housing in Newton is so incredibly expensive, you know, we're gonna see more and more families who are willing to move into apartments and condos to get their kids into a good school system.
I think I was looking for a one- or two-word answer.
Sorry. I didn't, I didn't talk about commodities.
Oh, all right. Oh, okay. That's true.
Barring that, to talk about schools.
Deal.
So, yeah, I would have liked to have seen us negotiate more with Northland for some possible school space.
Bill?
I, if we're talking about the current, you know, several set of projects that are, that are on the table right now, we probably do have the existing capacity, especially with the rebuilds that are planned for Countryside and so forth. But if we're talking about a whole bunch more projects beyond that, then we might have to talk about another school. And it would be great to have one here.
Rena?
As Brian said, the, the Upper Falls School belongs on the Northland site where the community center is.
Interesting. Well, obviously, when you're talking about development, you're talking as well about the impact on roads, traffic, and transit, which are already choking us even without the new development. So I wonder to what extent our traffic congestion is a problem over which Newton has control as opposed to state roads. And if so, what would you, as a city councillor, do to address the problem? Let's start with Bill this time.
I think it's certainly primarily a state-level issue in that public transportation is primarily governed by and funded by the state, and that's going to be, continue to be the key to sort of addressing overall congestion. I mean, for example, on Needham Street, I think it's something like 70% of all of the traffic that goes from one end to the other is pass-through traffic that's not stopping at anything on Needham Street. And that's because, you know, people are commuting through Newton from other places into Boston or wherever. And so in that respect, it's a state-level issue, it's a regional issue. Anybody on city council or the mayor, whoever, is gonna have to work with the other communities, work with the state, and that sort of thing. Within our power in the city level, there are certain changes that can be made to some of the, you know, streets. I think, for example, they've been talking a lot about redesigns for Washington Street, the street itself, to try to increase the throughput on traffic and things like that. It's kind of, it's a difficult one, you know, and for Needham Street, it's especially difficult. It's not gonna be widened or anything. As my mom always says, when she moved into Newton, it was pretty bad, and it's still pretty bad.
Kathy?
Yeah, well, traffic has certainly gotten worse since we moved here in 2000, and it has not been because of development in Newton, right? I mean, Needham has seen tremendous development over the past 10 years. From 2010 to 2020, their population is projected to grow by 20%. And a lot of those folks are driving through Ward 5, especially Upper Falls. So we don't have a lot of control over that. So what can we do? We can continue to lobby the state for improvements to public transit. We can pursue our own public-private shuttle partnerships, or, you know, I've spoken with members of the, of the city government in Needham or the town government who are open to pursuing, you know, a municipal partnership on an electric shuttle system. But also, I mean, again, walking, you know, we need to improve pedestrian safety and access in Newton.
Okay, so...
Nope.
Rena.
Oh. Sorry.
No, that's okay. You know, I actually think that it's a regional problem. And I think until we start putting tax dollars into improving mass transit, mass transit should be free. Because when it's free, people will use it. I also believe that we are going to get to a place within our community where cars will be smaller, and then also, too, cars will be more efficient. And let's get away from this, let's, let's, I actually believe that it's important for us to think proactively as individuals in terms of not taking so many car trips. And also, too, trying to sort of think through your day so that you're in that car maybe once a day, if not, you know, every few days. But I do think that it's primarily a problem with, especially Needham Street, that it's a thoroughfare. And I think we have many people that are working people that need their vehicles in order to come into places of work. And they're coming from other parts of the, of the state. And it's, I was speaking to somebody today, and she was an hour commute each way to come in and work in Newton. So it's a regional problem.
Yeah. That's all very depressing. Okay. We have two questions before we move on to the candidate questions for each other. Any discussion of development, and we've touched on, we flirted with the topic of affordable housing. But going a little bit deeper into it, do you believe that high-density, high-priced luxury developments with a small percentage of subsidized affordable units are the best way to create affordable housing in Newton in general and in Ward 5? And also, if you want to throw in your definition of affordable housing, that would be very illuminating. So, let's see. Let's start with Rena.
Well, just, you can only look, the first one to look at is Austin Street. There was, I was actually in the Fair Housing Committee meeting on Wednesday morning, and I found out that there was a third of the number of applicants for the affordable units at 80% AMI than there were at the Hancock Village Lottery. So what I would say is that it's not meeting the need that we need. We need either at 50% AMI or 30% AMI. And it's a huge problem.
You want to define AMI?
Area median income. And DHCD sets those standards, and they set them for Newton. But no, the model is not correct because the Austin Street, you know, that was a third subsidized unit, but the other two-thirds are now on the market for $4,000-plus for 1,000 square feet and $6,200 for a two-bedroom. So who can afford that kind of rent? And, you know, you just only need to look a little bit further to see that what's coming is a predominance of market rate and exorbitant cost. And I don't consider that actually fulfilling the need for housing stock. I think it's a real problem, and I think that we need to figure out a way to create naturally affordable units. And we do so by either creating small footprint builds, or we, we are proactive. We have land trusts, we buy property, and we, we either subsidize or we figure out a way to put in a higher percentage of subsidized units that are perpetually, in perpetuity, deed-restricted units.
Bill, did I see you nodding?
Oh, I was, yeah, nodding along with, about the community land trusts and things like that. You know, that's something that I'd certainly like to explore. I don't necessarily know what the best fit for Newton in particular is, but a lot of municipalities across the country are dealing with this same challenge and, you know, are coming up with creative ways of solving it. I think to your original question, you know, about the inclusionary zoning and some of the expensive market-rate apartments, I think that this is one of the tools in the toolbox to address affordable housing. If we were trying to, you know, solve the affordable housing crisis exclusively through, you know, 15 to 20% of the units in a building, it would never work. I mean, just, that's not gonna solve it. It's obviously probably best suited to a situation where you have a private landholder, private developer, they own the land, they're trying to do some sort of a project. We obviously want to get, you know, as many of those units as possible to be affordable units. There's federal designations around affordability, and I'm using that when I'm referring to affordable. Sort of the other consequence of that, though, tends to be that they do, you know, raise the rents and, or prices or whatever of the other units because they're effectively cross-subsidizing for the, for the lower-income units.
Kathy?
Yeah, I don't love the idea that we have to allow high-density luxury units in order to get a small percentage of affordable housing. But the fact is, we don't have any other way to develop affordable housing in any significant numbers. I mean, there's just not the political will anymore for the old sort of state subsidized command-and-control affordable housing developments. So, you know, that's why we've gone to the system of 40B and inclusionary zoning ordinances where developers are allowed to build, you know, a higher density of market-rate housing so long as they agree to a certain percentage of affordable. So until someone comes up with a better way, and I don't have a better way, you know, that's what we're left with.
Rena, you seem to be in disagreement.
Oh, no, 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 no. I sort of do not agree with that. You know, I think that we can be very creative, and I think other communities are being creative about this problem because land cost is so high. And I also know that we have a strong sort of desire within our constituency to give back. And I've talked with many residents that are actually sort of thinking through maybe, you know, in some way, either, and we talked about this a while ago in terms of, you know, maybe 10 years ago, there was a way to create an accessory apartment that was deed-restricted. So I think there's more willingness. If people are willing to create an auxiliary or accessory apartment on their lot, that there are, there's, we're getting to a place where I think people are more willing to do things like this.
Okay. Last question before the format shifts. Do you expect that Mayor Fuller will propose another tax override soon? And if she does, will you support it or oppose it, and why? Bill, do you want to start?
I don't know if she has specific plans to propose one or not, although I think that all of us are kind of looking at the various rising costs of a number of things and some special projects that are coming up. And it seems like it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility. I think one of the interesting things about the most recent override in 2013 was that they decided to make it pretty specific about what it was for, and I think that certainly helped build support for it in that way. I would certainly, if we were talking about one, I would want to see, you know, are they, is it just a general override? Is it a specific override to help fund certain projects, you know, maybe retrofit some of our city buildings for, you know, getting off of fossil fuels, things like that? In general, you know, I would like to know what we're planning to do with it. But in general, it probably would be necessary, yeah.
Kathy?
Well, we, you know, we're on sound financial footing, but our plan to fund our unfunded pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities...
OPEB being the health costs for employees.
Yeah, other pension employee benefits. That leaves us in a really tight space because, you know, that plan to fund our unfunded pension liabilities by 2029, one, it assumes a 7.25% annual investment return, right? That's nice.
Nice work if you can do it.
Yeah, that's pretty good. So if we don't meet that, we're in trouble. Two, it's backloaded. Every year, our contributions to that plan have to increase by 9.6%, right? Our overall tax levy historically increases by only 4.5%. So every year, sort of the slice of the pie that has to go to funding those liabilities gets bigger. So unless we can grow our tax base, especially our commercial tax base, I do think it's likely in the future that in order to maintain a level of city services and deal with our infrastructure needs, we, you know, we may end up with another override.
Rena?
Well, I, as the, the OPEB and the unfunded liability for the pension, one of them will be fully funded by 20, I'm pretty sure it's the OPEB that's fully funded in terms of the savings account by 2030. And then we will kick in and pay the other one, the retirement fund by 2040. That's the plan. And yes, they, they are going to be more aggressively paid off, you know, as, as we get closer. But I also believe that it's a priority, and I've seen other communities do this, where they do an override with high specificity of what the ask is in terms of the community. But I'm very concerned of the impact on fixed-income residents because I think, and I know, that many people are very close to the line now. And so an override would have a negative effect on them. But it depends on the ask, and it depends on how we sort of consider people that are not able to pay it into the system.
Okay. So now we have an opportunity for you to ask question of another candidate. And we'll try to work in two rounds of that. Kathy, let's start with you.
Well, one thing that I think I bring to the table... Well, one thing that I think I bring to the table as a city council candidate is my ability to work with people with different perspectives and to try to build consensus, both in my experience as an attorney, as a community leader. So one question I would have for both these guys.
Which one?
Oh, only one of them? All right, I'll start with you, Bill, since you're next to me.
Well, actually, you know, do it with both because we may not have time to go back and do it individually.
Okay. Is, you know, what in your background prepares you to work well with other city councillors and people of different viewpoints?
Well, I'd say that I've been working with a lot of the city councillors already for the past several years on a range of issues. You know, certainly we don't agree on everything, but I try to come into things with having as positive and good of a working relationship as I can with everyone. The other thing is, you know, in addition to all the, you know, campaigns that I've been involved in, which involves a lot of working with people that you don't necessarily agree with, you know, my job, when I was a senior editor at the magazine that I was working at for about five years, often involved working with, you know, former cabinet members and even former prime ministers of various countries that were contributing pieces to this magazine. And those are very, you know, sensitive personalities that need to be handled, you know, with, with care. And I certainly learned a lot about working with those folks.
Rena, your answer?
Well, I think it's my background, you know, just in terms of learning how to listen because I think you really have to interpret what someone is saying. And they may not be saying it with their words. They may be how they're saying it or when they're saying it or what they, you know, it's, it's a combination of things. Being a parent. Number one, being a parent, that really teaches you a lot in life. And I think that's important because I think it's a skill set that everybody should have, you know, in the sense of learning how to live in a family group and, well, live within a group, you know, in general. I've been on the area council since the beginning, the Waban area council, and I think that we've gone through a lot of processes that, that's helpful in terms of getting to a negotiated end. And then also, too, I have worked with quite a few of the councillors on many different issues and topics, and we have advocated for very specific things. And so we have to reach consensus and we have to present what we want to, to the full council.
Bill, do you have a question for the candidates to your right and left?
Sure. Yeah, I guess the question for the two candidates, you know, since they're Waban area council members and so forth, if they could talk about what positions they took with regard to the Engine Six proposal and the Waban Square housing developments and whether that's consistent with the current positions in their current campaign.
I'll answer that one first. Engine Six, Waban has a lot of scars. And I think of it as being the kind of thing where Engine Six, you know, for me, I'm very proud of the work that the Engine Six supporters have done. They actually, with Citi Warren, reached an agreement and the agreement reached, had some miles, had some requirements in fulfilling that agreement.
Federal settlement.
Correct, but it was a conciliatory agreement. It wasn't court, it wasn't, it was an agreement. So, but in terms of what, what came out of it was that I've been attending the Fair Housing Committee. And so there's a criteria that's applied on every project now that comes in front of the Fair Housing Committee. And so they have a process where they review each project in terms of fulfilling fair housing goals. And so, and then the second piece was that we have gotten 10 to 12 units at the Gold of My Ear House, which is maybe, you know, four blocks down the road. That was a fulfillment of that agreement. So I think that there's benefit to that. I also would say that in terms of the, I, I am concerned about, well, that you, in terms of the two 40Bs that were proposed in Waban, the one at the Staple Crafts House put forth equal footing for the 40B and also historical preservation because we actually landmarked that site. And that site is incredibly valuable to our community as a pillar home in our Waban Village Center. With regard to St. Philip's Neri, I don't think that the best compromise was reached. I would have liked to have seen the church made, saved, and then to have had a 20 to 30, as Keith Muncell had proposed, for the site in terms of accommodating units at the site, but the preservation of the church. But that was the developer's choice in terms of how he, the outcome of that site because he had control of whether or not he wanted to litigate and go forward.
Kathy, the original question was Engine Six?
Yep.
And to what extent it squares with your campaign?
Yeah, I mean, on Engine Six, I mean, that predated the Waban area council. And in fact, I was just talking with my friend today about what a short process that was from when I first learned about it to, you know, when the mayor pulled the plug. So I didn't really have a position on Engine Six, but I will say it was one of the reasons that I decided to get involved in the Waban area councils because I did go to a meeting that was incredibly divisive with really, really strong voices, kind of drowning out a constructive dialogue. So, and I realized, I wasn't really aware of what was going around me, going on around me in city government, so I got involved. On, on both of the 40Bs in Waban Square, you know, on the Waban area council, we, we did advocate for improvements for those projects. You can look online at those letters, you know, the, both those letters, they comport with smart growth principles. But more specifically on St. Philip's Neri, I worked closely with the developer and the developer's attorney and city councillor, John Rice, at the developer's request to connect with the community. I mean, that developer from the outset expressed a desire to work with the neighbors. So, you know, John and I sat through many meetings with neighbors, tried to educate them at the, on the process and tried to facilitate a dialogue between them. The neighbors and the developer reached that compromise, you know, and, and if you, if you have any questions about that, I spoke with the developer's attorney, Steve Buckminder, today. He said to me, he's happy to talk to anybody about this and about my role because, you know, I would do the same again, and in fact, am doing the same again with another development that's been proposed in Waban at the Waban Health Center, right behind Waban Market. That developer, who's filed a special permit for 24 units there, had asked to get connected with neighbors. I have facilitated that, but neighbors are all very supportive and I expect that that, you know, will go through a relatively speedy process as a result.
You mean, that's going to be in the current parking lot?
Not in the current parking lot, where the Waban Health Center is, that nursing home which closed. You know, it would sort of, excuse me, stay within the same footprint, add one story.
Okay. Our audience has been very, very patient. Do it again, it's nothing.
No. I would ask whether or not either of you would landmark the Stevens Building and/or the Strong Building.
You know, I mean, I have to be honest, I don't know enough about the landmark process and the criteria for it to be able to give you a good answer for that.
1615 was the same criteria.
I mean, I think those buildings are deserving of some historical preservation, but, you know, I just have to be honest, I don't know enough about that to give you an answer.
It's going to be exactly like 1615.
I didn't know enough about that process. I mean, I mean, I think that was a good.
We did it in the area council.
About the state, the Peck property?
Yes, we landmarked that site. Well, it was right at the same time.
I don't remember that the same way, Rena.
Okay, well, I, you know, that's, that was my piece.
All right.
I'll just briefly say, yeah, I don't think I know enough about it either for those two specific properties, so I don't want to comment on that without looking into it further.
Okay. Now, I'm sure there are questions in the audience. Show, just raise, to make, to make sure that the buildings that are going up are energy-efficient. Bill, do you want to?
Sure, yeah. So I'm endorsed in this campaign by Sunrise Boston and by the Massachusetts Sierra Club. I used to be at the Massachusetts Sierra Club's political committee, which evaluated other cities' candidates for municipal office on what they were going to do on the environment. I'm certainly very concerned as well, like you said, there's a lot of these developments that are being proposed with, you know, well, maybe some of it will have heat pumps or maybe some of it will be solar-ready, or we're still going to have natural gas for this and that and that sort of thing. And I think that especially for any new construction of any size, we need to be taking a very firm line on that right now, right? Any building that's built now or built over the next 10 years is going to be here in 2050 when the entire world is supposed to be off of fossil fuels. So the idea that we're going to build something now that still has fossil fuels is absurd to me, and we have to take a strong line on that. And I think, you know, I'm 28 years old, that's one of the reasons that Sunrise Boston and I get along very well on this, is that we all agree that this is a pressing emergency and that people, especially in my age, cannot afford to wait around on that or be flexible on that particular point.
Kathy, your position on requiring solar of new buildings?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the answer to whether we can do that under state law. I mean, we're, we're limited in some of the things that we can do in our zoning code by the state building code. But certainly, I think, I think that's a good idea, and at the very least, we can require education of builders and homeowners about the possibility and the opportunities for solar. So generally, I am supportive of the concept, I just can't give you a real answer whether we can do that.
Rena?
Well, I would say that the climate mitigation plan was just reviewed in the zoning and planning committee, and at the end of the agenda was specifically solar and solar on commercial properties. Do you remember that, Bill? So that I would suggest that we are, as a community, advocating, and we can do so through the special permit criteria in terms of applying and asking that the commercial developments have solar. But in terms of prop, private property owners, I think that we need to do an education campaign, and I think that people are already very proactive. We are, you know, in terms of having your house evaluated and seeing whether or not it's adaptable and suitable to put solar panels on your house. So I think that the more that we support alternative sort of getting off of fossil fuels, the quicker we can, we are all going to benefit as a community.
Just as an adjunct question and exercising moderator's prerogatives, what remaining green spaces are there in Ward Five and what would you do to preserve them?
We have Lincoln Field. We also bought, you know, Hemlock Gorge, we bought Coal Spring Park. Those are significant. And then we have here Bracelet. And those are our significant recreational and open spaces.
And Quin of a Quinn.
And then all along, Quin of a Quinn. But that's actually a parkland in the sense of it's state-controlled.
Also, the golf courses, I think, are in, at least partly in Ward Five, and that's a kind of green space. I mean, it's a different kind of category, but it's, it is green space.
Apropos of Quin of a Quinn, my understanding is that something like $50,000 has been appropriated by DCR to study that parkland potential. What would you recommend to them?
A lot of the voters along Quin of a Quinn, and I think any of us who've ever been on it on foot or in a car, know that there's a lot of safety issues there, and anything that can be done to allow people to use that parkland for pedestrian or cycling purposes would be fantastic. And a lot of people, I think, really want that, you know, have a recreational path that gives a safe alternative connecting two very important points in Ward Five that, you know, are currently not very well served by anyone.
The bike path and the pedestrian, and also just general sort of maintenance of the space in signage so that people understand where to enter, and also, too, you know, just in terms of just the trails.
Kathy, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, same. I mean, a bike path and sidewalk along the parkway there, I think, would be a great benefit to the community. You know, I would say we, Quin of a Quinn is also in need of some traffic calming. You know, I live near there, I've been running along that road for the past 19 years. It has gotten increasingly dangerous and, you know, the speeds down that road are tremendous. So I'd like to see a path and I'd like to see more traffic calming there.
The question is the optimum number of city councillors and the breakdown between ward representation and at-large representation.
Well, I'm very supportive of ward representation, and I wouldn't want to see any change to our citizen legislature without ward representation. I think that we're very fortunate because we, being a citizen's legislature, we have people that come to the table because of love of community. And I've attended so many meetings at City Hall that the way that the work is divided up, it's as full as it can be for the amount of people that are on the, the full city council. I, you know, it's a hard ask in terms of lessening the number of representational votes, but I think that we could look at it, but without the loss of ward representation.
Bill?
I supported the 2017 proposal, you know, not necessarily every specific thing in it, but I thought it was better on balance. Ward Five voted in favor of that while the rest of the city did not. So, you know, I'm aligned with the Ward Five electorate on that particular issue. I think a size around 12 to 13 seems reasonable to me. I'm running for this seat because as long as this seat exists, I think it should be represented by someone that shares the perspective that I have and that was the majority perspective in Ward Five. I would also note that I think it is definitely true that the size does need to be reduced for the reasons that it affects, you know, how long the meetings take and everything, which then in turn affects public participation. We saw a demonstration of that earlier this week when the city council was debating, you know, the first-ever Airbnb-type regulations in the city at 11:30 PM. And that's not great for public awareness, input, participation, whatever you want to call it.
Kathy?
Yeah, 24 is too much, in my opinion, and I would support reducing the size of the council, but I was not supportive of eliminating ward representation. I don't know what the exact right number is, I think eight to 12, with either maintenance of ward representation or, you know, I'm also open to ranked choice voting because I think that that can get you to the same place as far as making sure that you have some minority viewpoints represented on the city council and that the majority doesn't control all the seats. You know, I would even go up to 16. The problem here is now that the charter reform failed, in order to reduce the size of the council, we need for the city council to approve it, for the mayor to approve it, and then for the electorate to approve it, right? So we have to get to all three steps. So I can't give you the exact answer because I would be open to compromise, and we are going to have to compromise to get that done.
Who wants to start on the senior center?
I can start. I mean, I'm very supportive of a new senior center. I think that we need to better serve our seniors with a state-of-the-art senior center. I'm open to the working group's conclusion to have a multi-generation, multi-generational facility, you know, provided that it still serves the needs of the senior population in terms of dedicated space and programming, in terms of making sure that, you know, seniors aren't jostling in the halls with a bunch of teenagers running to go off to the gym. Cost is an issue, too. Can we afford a multi-generational facility? And, you know, whether we can make the site layout work at Albemarle or at a different location. So if you can't make all of those priorities work, I would support, you know, reverting back to a seniors-only facility. But I am very supportive of trying to get this done. I'm concerned about Albemarle, I'd prefer a site that was centrally located, that was near public transit, that had better parking, but it's hard to find the perfect site, so, you know, and that wasn't.
Was there one that you think would have been better?
No, not on that list. I mean, I, I would, I didn't like any of the potential sites that involved encroaching on green space. I mean, and that's one reason I'm open to Albemarle, because if we can get a senior center that enhances the recreational facilities at Albemarle, that serves our seniors and that doesn't encroach on green space, I'm open to it. So I'm looking forward to looking at what the site layout plans are, but I do hope that the city is still pursuing, you know, a purchase of a private property that might better suit our needs.
Rena?
Well, I actually sort of feel as if we need to hold right now because I don't think Albemarle is an, is an ideally site. I think that the, you know, there is a potential of something coming on the market that could provide a more centrally-located location for accessibility to a senior center. I think it's important to think about the percentage of people in our community that are seniors because I sort of equate it to a new school, you know, in terms of the cost to the community in terms of dollars. So I think it's important to prioritize providing a new facility, but I actually feel as if we can do significant improvements to programs and services for our seniors because I don't think that with the, the council on aging and looking at their line item in the, in the budget, that it's sufficient. And I think that we really need to sort of double, if not triple, that number because I think I've, in my canvassing, I've seen quite a few seniors that live in isolation. And I think that we need to sort of think about the quality of their lives, we need to provide better services for our seniors. And I also feel as if not, not necessarily the infrastructure or the building is as critical as programs and services for our seniors and transit for our seniors.
Bill?
Yeah, I think a lot of voters of all ages felt kind of blindsided when the list, the long list came out, you know, especially when we're seeing like Cold Spring Park, for example, on that list, you know. And, and I think that is sort of, was when a lot of people started realizing that there was maybe something that was not quite right with how the process had gone down. So I think you asked about, or the person in the audience asked about process to some degree, and I'm very concerned about how it has transpired so far and people feeling like they not only were not looped in on these things, that public participation wasn't solicited, that they don't understand the conclusions that have been reached so far. Obviously, I think we're all waiting at this point to see what the proposal is if it's Albemarle, you know, because they're going to release a design plan and we don't even have that right now. But, you know, as soon as that location was announced, you know, my mother sent me a text message saying, well, how am I supposed to get there other than by driving? You know, there's no bus line there, I can't walk there. You know, she was able to walk to the current senior center location. And this is something that I've been thinking about literally as long as I can remember because my great aunt was very elderly growing up in the house, you know, when I was growing up, and she had a lot of mobility challenges, especially after falling. And, you know, my sister and I were just talking the other day about kind of... And, you know, my sister and I were just talking the other day about kind of the transportation challenges that it took to get her to her activities during the day and my sister to preschool and everything. And I think that's a familiar story for a lot of families. So transportation and centrality in that way has to be a huge part of it. In terms of the question about the, you know, what kind of a facility, I think we're all very supportive of having a senior center that is primarily for seniors. I think it would be great to have multi-generational programming, but I think there's a difference between multi-generational programming and a multi-generational facility. You know, we obviously want to make sure that our young people are able to, you know, connect with our seniors who are such an important reservoir of knowledge and civic society participation in Newton. But, you know, having a facility that is, you know, for seniors fundamentally, with other things being, you know, around that, I think is a different matter.
Thank you. We broaden that to the question of whether you see part of your role as going on a regular basis to the various area council meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that I regularly attend the Upper Falls as well as the Newton Highlands area councils because I think it's important to engage and to, you know, hear what the residents of those communities through their area councils have to say. You know, I think also too, that we are so lucky in Ward Five to have three of the four area councils in the city of Newton. And I think we need to have area councils throughout the city. I think that they're an important and really critical piece of our local city governance.
I think, Ms., I'm just curious to know how many meetings you've actually been.
Oh, I've been, I've been, I've been to numerous Upper Falls meetings.
Bill?
Well, I know.
As well as, as well as the Highlands.
I, I certainly get a lot of information, as, as Mark says, from going to these meetings and knowing what's happening in the different neighborhoods. I have been to almost every single area council meeting of the three area councils since last spring. And for most of last year, it was just me at most of those, you know, the ones that were outside of Waban. The other candidates certainly have been going more recently, but, you know, not as frequently.
Kathy? Yeah, I've been to a few Upper Falls, more Newton Highlands, and obviously every Waban area council.
Kathy?
Sure.
Do you want to start?
Yeah, first, I want to thank the area councils for putting this event on. I know it's a lot of work. I know you're, you know, being an area councillor is in many ways a thankless job that involves a lot of time and effort, so I'm really appreciative for this community service. You know, I hope tonight, through these question and answers, you've got some sense of my vision and my priorities. I do think that I can be an effective city councillor who will prioritize constituent services and serve as a voice for Ward Five. I've built an extensive record of community service in Newton during my 19 years here. As I mentioned earlier, as an attorney, as a community leader, I have extensive experience in working with people of different viewpoints and building consensus and moving forward. I'm very proud that many of the people who have endorsed me in this race are people who have worked closely with me and who can attest to my character and abilities. So I hope you will give me your vote next Tuesday to be your next Ward Five councillor. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Bill?
I'm Bill Humphrey. I live on Chestnut Street where I grew up. I'm running to be your next ward councillor, and I hope that you'll vote for me next Tuesday. I'm running to make sure that we're a community for everyone and that we have a councillor who represents all of Ward Five. I've been endorsed in this campaign by the Massachusetts Nurses Association Union, by Progressive Newton, by the Engine Six Group, by the Sierra Club, by Sunrise Boston, by the Bay State Stonewall Democrats, and many other organizations and many other individuals and activists in Ward Five. My priorities, again, road repair, environmental action, affordable housing, and strong city services with strong public employee unions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rena?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for moderating this panel, and thank you to the other candidates for Ward Five, ward councillor. This is an open seat, and I think that we need to respect that, and we need to be the voice of the people of the community of Ward Five. I feel as if I have been at the table, I have been engaged with the city, I have a lot of experiential sort of experience with how City Hall works, and I will bring that to the city council when and if I'm voted into office. I think that it's important for our community to be engaged. I think it's important for everybody to sort of think of us, whether it's either one of us, to be the, your representative, your voice in the city council chamber. I want to be open to dialogue. I want everybody to understand that it's important that you see any one of us as your representative in the city council chamber. I think it's important for us to think about the proposed zoning code, what's coming in the future in terms of creating climate mitigation standards in our zoning code, because I think that climate change is very real, and we need to do everything and anything we can to sort of offset at, at the municipal level for climate change. I actually believe that it's important for us all to sort of get further engaged with the city council. And I hope that I've earned your, both your respect and your vote on September 10th.
Thank you very much, and thank you all. We have a lot of talent here. And so I would encourage you all to remember the preliminary next Tuesday and go out and vote. Thanks for being with us.[1775.51][1775.51][applause][1776.51][1776.51][music]